We'll begin starting just about two minutes. Well, good morning, members of the MAG 911 Oversight Team and PSET Managers Group. This meeting is now called to order. For those around the table, please turn on your microphone when speaking. For those participating via Zoom, please state your name when making a comment or asking a question. The MAG public comment process allows members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda or on items that fall under MAG jurisdiction. If you would like to comment at today's meeting, please fill out a white request to speak card located on the information table in the hallway and give it to MAG staff. If you are parked in the garage, parking validators are available on the information table in the hallway. If you purchased a transit ticket to come to the meeting, please see staff for a ticket. Hearing assisted devices are available from MAG staff. We will now begin the meeting with a roll call of all members. Ms. Graeber?
Thank you, Chief Walker. First, I'll go through the list of the 911 Oversight Team members. Make sure that you are unmuted or indicate if you are present when I call your name. Scott Walker, Phoenix Fire Department.
Present.
Robert Boginsky, Scottsdale PD.
Present.
Carrie Castro Vincy, Avondale.
Present, and good job.
Robert Sanders, Buckeye PD. Michelle Potts, Chandler PD. Brett Axon, Glendale PD.
Present.
Santiago Rodriguez, Goodyear PD.
Present.
Proxy Patrick Melvin, MCSO.
Good morning, President.
Forrest Smith, Mesa Fire and Medical Department.
Present.
Gary Bernard, Peoria Fire and Medical Department. Jesse Cooper, Phoenix PD.
I'm its proxy today, Liz, Nicole Diedrich, and present.
And proxy Catherine Masters. Is there anyone present that I did not call? Chair, we do have a quorum of the 911 Oversight Team.
Thank you.
PSET Managers, I will now go through the members. Brittany Brunet, Peoria PD.
Present.
Karen Sutton, Scottsdale PD.
Present.
Ian Walter, AMR, Royal Metro. Lisa M. Emmanheiser, Apache Junction. Trish Price, ASU. Mike Folia, Avondale PD.
Mike Folia.
Trish Price is, sorry, Trish Price is present.
Thank you, Trish, and I also copied Mike Folia's. Jim Tatura, Buckeye PD.
Tatura, present.
Stephanie Heinzelman, Chandler PD.
Present.
Kiara Nelson, Arizona Department of Public Safety.
Thank you.
Stephanie Beebe Fort McDowell. Kim Weber, Gilbert PD.
Present.
Loretta Hadlock, Glendale PD.
Present.
Shawna Henry, Goodyear PD.
Present.
David Demir, Air Force Base Fire Department.
Present.
Thank you, David. Jim Stillwell, MCSO.
Good morning, present.
Nicole York, Mesa Fire Department.
Present.
Lindy Guguie, Mesa PD.
Present.
Heather Beckwith, Paradise Valley PD.
Present.
Phoenix Fire Department.
Jim Frazier, present.
Dan Macgamy, Phoenix PD.
Amy Cubusack, I'm the proxy, I'm present.
Dave Martin, Salt River PD.
Present.
Damala Finacy, Surprise PD.
Present.
Tonya Logan, Tempe PD.
Present.
Amanda Howard.
Here, Kansas City, MR 911.
Join the meeting.
Present.
Lieutenant Aaron Hadley, Wickhamburg PD.
Present.
Is there anyone present that I did not call? And Chair?
Liz, this is Patty Stimson, did you get me for DPS?
I have Kiara Nelson here.
Oh, she's there, okay, I didn't hear her answer, thank you.
Is there anyone present that I did not call? Chair, we do have a quorum of the PSET Managers Group.
Thank you, Ms. Graeber. Our next item is a call to the audience. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on items that fall under MAG jurisdiction that are not on the agenda or that are on the agenda for discussion and not for action. Fifteen minutes will be provided for the call to the audience agenda item unless the committee requests an exception to this limit. This time, I have received zero request to speak cards for this agenda item. MAG also provides the opportunity for members of the public to submit written comments via the MAG website one hour prior to the meeting. Staff, do we have any written comments for this item?
Chair, as of today, we received no written comments of this item or any other item on the agenda.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item. So for the next agenda item, the MAG 911 Oversight Team and PSET Managers Group will jointly review submitted questions and issues on how Maricopa Region 911 currently operates and consider opportunities for Regional 911. Liz Graeber will begin this discussion. Ms. Graeber?
Thank you. So, we received approximately 250 questions. Obviously, we don't have enough time to go through all of them today. We sorted them by topic and went through and found ones that were asked the most and will hit on those, we'll go through the through the ones that we selected to review and see if we can answer a lot of the questions. That way, a lot of them were repeated from multiple PSAPS. And then we can, then I'll turn it back over to Chief Walker, if that's okay.
That sounds good, thank you.
All right, if we go ahead into the next slide, we'll start in. So, we're going to start with MAG concerns, and these are the questions that were directed more as not necessarily MR 911, but MAG, the Maricopa Association of Governments, and questions about how it runs. Question number one, what are the goals and visions and the duration of the study committee? And I'll have Nathan Pryor answer that.
Thank you, Chairs. Thank you, members of the respective committees. My name is Nathan Pryor. I'm the Policy and Government Relations Director here at the Maricopa Association of Governments. Good morning. I think before we tackle not just this topic area, but going through all the questions, first of all, thank you for submitting your questions, issues, concerns. That's very helpful as we launch anticipating reconvening our MAG 911 Study Committee. We'll talk a little bit about that composition here in a moment. So, this will help inform the work of that study committee. So, thank you for that. As Liz pointed out, some over 250 questions collected to date. Can't obviously go through all those today in time allotted. We took the most frequently asked questions, if you will, in the respective topic areas. Do our best to respond to those today. I think the plan is that with the balance of those questions that we will be developing responses to those. And again, those will help to inform not just you all and the respective two committees, but also the 911 Study Committee and the region at large. And also, before I get started, just a note that the Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG, is you all, it's the member agencies. So, I get to work here, it's a pleasure and privilege. However, I'm staff. So, the governing structure of MAG, as has been pointed out, is our board, is the Regional Council. So, that's elected officials from cities and towns, 27 cities and towns, three native nations and two counties. The body meets generally monthly throughout the year. We have other policy committees as well, including city managers. Are one of our primary tasks that we work on here as a metropolitan planning organization is transportation. We also work on air quality issues. We do coordination response to homelessness, domestic violence, building codes, any number of issue areas. We have some two dozen technical committees within our agency, not dissimilar from this, where again, it's member agencies who send their representatives to work on really hard issues for the, hopefully for the betterment of our region, of our residents, businesses, and visitors. So, just want to provide that context before I start. So, the question first off, under MAG concerns on the screen, what are our goals, vision, duration of the 911 Study Committee? So, the first time we launched this committee was in 2016. We were at a similar crossroads as a region regarding 911 issues where there was, we were approached to consider 911 as a service, managed services. This committee considered it, 911 Oversight Team. It was an issue that rose to a level of attention and concern of the city managers at that time. The city managers have the, the management committee has under their kind of authority or purview, if you will, within MAG to create, appoint, convene study committees to help inform them of their own work and decision-making. So, at that time, in the fall months of 2016, a study committee was formed. The co-chairs are, were Chris Brady, City Manager of Mesa, and Kevin Phelps, City Manager of Glendale. The rest of the composition identified by, and approved by the management committee were the chairs and vice-chairs of the Oversight Team, the chairs and vice-chairs of the PSET Managers, the Chair of the MAG Technical Advisory Group, as well as a number of police representatives. At that time, it was four representatives appointed to that study committee. The goal of that committee was to, again, consider the opportunity of managed services and what that meant for the region. The work that was mapped by the study committee determined at that time that managed services approach was not to be pursued. We did launch a process where we developed a seven-year plan utilizing a consultant to help assist with that work. So, the result of that was a seven-year plan that was recommended by that study committee. It went back through the MAG kind of chain, if you will, from PSET Managers Oversight Team Management Committee and ultimately approved by the MAG Regional Council. The duration of that, I believe, the first meeting occurred in October timeframe, October, November of 2016. And the, I believe, the approval of the seven-year plan was in a June, May-June timeframe. So, about six or seven months was the duration from convening the study committee to the final approval of the seven-year plan by the Regional Council. So, that was, that was the process in goals, vision, duration of the 911 Study Committee in 2016, 2017. Just regarding the composition of the study committee, as I stated, it's up to the management committee to identify that composition. We were requested at that time to recommend a staff to the management committee what composition would look like in terms of relevant committees at MAG. It's, of course, identified as PSET Oversight and a MAG tag rounding out police representation. Why, and the question more, why is it limited with perception being more fire representation than police? These chairs and vice-chair positions on the Oversight and PSET, they rotate out. Typically, our practice at MAG regarding committee leadership is to have a geographic balance, looking at East Valley, West Valley, Central City, County, and trying to provide some kind of equity, if you will, in terms of leadership so we're not too heavy in any one subregion of the valley. So, it's dependent on the, who is the chair, vice-chair at the time? Just, it's just a matter of kind of chance, if you will, and also their position within their respective agency, be they police or fire. So, that's not trying to move forward more fire representation, the police, or vice versa. Doing our best to have some kind of balance in the composition of the study committee. But again, ultimately, it's up to the management committee to decide and convene that study committee and the composition. Next question, why is the Chair of the Oversight Committee, the direct supervisor, the administrator? Just answered that question, it's the Chair, vice-chair positions rotate. It's just how it worked out this time. Again, regarding composition of the 911 Oversight Team, why does MAG select members? Again, it's the managers, you all, MAG member agencies that work on selection of the members, the composition. So, again, why does Phoenix have two votes, fire and police? That's a good question, that's more of a historical kind of, it is what it is. To date, up until about three years ago, the Oversight Team's composition was prescribed. And that was kind of a lasting kind of legacy issue going back, I don't know how many years, seemingly a number of decades. So, when Maricopa, Maricopa Region 911 was formed, when the, when the region met in the 1980s to map our regional 911 kind of system and future, obviously, the metro area was very different. Population-wise, very different, different, smaller towns, smaller cities, if you will, just very different place back in the 1980s, so almost 40 years ago now. So, I think the composition was just limited just by geography, just by the nature of the system, meeting the needs of that geography. And that's the way that composition, composition of the Oversight Team went on for a number of years. In fact, I think, in fact, to the, through the 90s, the, there was actually just one 911 committee. And then it was broken up into PSET Managers and Oversight Team. So, because of that, and just because of the legacy of our system, Phoenix Central City has a prominent role in what we do here as an agency, given obviously their size and scope. So, they do have two votes, there are two representatives on the Oversight Team currently. So, that's, that is why. Any questions on any of those before we move to the next topic area?
Mr. Stillwell?
Thank you, Jim Stillwell, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Two questions. The first being, you had noted that, and if my count in my head is right, only two out of the roughly dozen members of that 2016 Study Committee were subject matter experts in the 911 field. Just as I wouldn't expect to tell a police officer what type of gun to buy or a firefighter what type of ladder to buy, why is police and firefighters telling us what type of 911 system to buy?
Mr. Chairman, again, it's up to the discretion of the Management Committee to appoint members utilizing the composition of the MAG member agencies that we had at that time. It's something that can certainly be looked at and addressed as we look to reconvene the study committee at the discretion of the MAG Management Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Stillwell.
Second question along those same lines, you had mentioned that it's been 40 years regarding the, the structure of the voting members. Maybe the composition needs to be relooked at. The, as you stated, the makeup of the Phoenix metro area has changed significantly. And I don't, I don't feel that it's fair to the valley as a whole that one municipality has more weight than any other.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I did fail to mention, three years ago, we did open up the composition of the 911 Oversight Team to all member agencies. I think somewhat to the point with the region's growth, it became basically somewhat indefensible, if you will, to limit that composition when there are so many member agencies with the interest and have role in our 911 system. So, with that being said, the Oversight Team composition is no longer prescribed or limited.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also add in, when the study committee did recognize that they needed subject matter experts, and that's why federal engineering was hired to do as part of the strategic plan. So, that consulting firm was hired by MAG to be able to guide it when writing the strategic plan.
Thank you. Another question, so over here?
Kim Weber with Gilbert PD. I may have missed it, so if I did, I apologize. Can you go back and address the goals, vision, and timeline of the current 911 Study Committee? That's going to be going, because that's, I think, important for the agencies to know what to expect.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committees. Again, that's going to be determined was by the chairs, co-chairs, study committee, working with those members. Again, we're at a similar place as we were in 2016 with an opportunity to consider 911 as a service. We are also in year six of that seven-year plan. So, I think it's an opportunity to check in on the progress to date of that plan and map potentially another seven-year plan or if the member agencies want to imagine something, another alternative to that, that is certainly within the discretion of the study committee to pursue that. And as far as duration, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Weber, that's unknown. It'll be up to the study committee in terms of their work and effort as to the duration.
So, if you have no idea how long this study committee is going to take, can you then address when the study committees can be formed, when the meetings are anticipated to take place? A frequency of the meetings, reporting out of the meeting, updates? Any of those things that you can share with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, it's on for action at next week's MAG Management Committee to reconvene the study committee. So, that will be the first action taken. We'll work with the members identified by the management committee to start setting schedule in the 2016-2017 timeframe, I believe. Generally, that committee met monthly, providing direction to staff and consultants and as their work progressed, reconvening to meet for status updates and more input into that process.
Any question? Any other questions for Mr. Pryor?
Shawna Henry, Goodyear PD. You talked about the composition of the committee being set by the management committee. Are we going simply off the composition from the study committee in 2016? Or has that gone to the management committee for reevaluation? And given what you just said, is that something that could be put on agenda to look at the composition and add more subject matter experts in PSET Managers who are actually working in the field with this technology?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committees, that can certainly be looked at. At this time, it's been proposed to, Chris Brady and Kevin Phelps are still managers with their respective agencies, Mesa and Glendale. They are prepared to co-chair the study committee going forward. There's been no change in terms of Oversight, PSET, and MAG tag, those slots, if you will, Chair and Vice Chair. So, that's being proposed to me forward as well. The Police Department composition has changed somewhat. We have brought this to the attention of government relations staff in the region. To date, we have expressed interest from Phoenix PD to be on there as well as Tempe, Chandler, Gilbert, and Goodyear are the ones that have expressed interest at this time.
Thank you. Any further question for Mr. Pryor? Ms. Weber?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, not a question. I think it would behoove us, for our group, especially PSET Managers, as we are anticipating upgrades and expansions and all the projects that we're undergoing.
It would behoove us for our group, especially P S A P managers, as we are anticipating upgrades and expansions and all the projects that we're undergoing. To get a more firm timeline and update of how these these issues are going to be addressed, because it's affecting us greatly as we're approaching cutting over to the NGCS system. So my earnest request is that you update us as soon as you can and let us know how long this is going to take, because it impacts us every day. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think out of next week's meeting, we'll have more direction. I think it is important for all of us to remember that the the MAG structure that we all work within, um, the managers will make a lot of these decisions. These issues, concerns will obviously be brought forward to the MAG manage, the managers, and and they will make decisions based on that. So this is a good conversation to have so that they can hear these things. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Pryor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, not on this slide.
Thank you. Ms. Graber?
Okay, we can go to the next slide. A regional process, this is also Nathan will um address these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the committees, uh. So what is MR nine one's role with P Saps? I I think there's probably uh two things uh we all need to understand. I think we do understand. You know, there's MR nine one one uh with Liz Graber as the administrator, uh, her team uh working out of Phoenix Fire. Um, basically uh maintaining, operating, ensuring our system is is operable and working. Um, to that end, but then there's also the MAG side of it as well, uh, where uh issues can be expressed. Um, this is again, we're we're a convener, if you will, of conversations, uh, so that's why we do have. Uh, the two nine one one committees uh providing input uh concerns, but also noting that, of course. Uh, you all are closest uh to the system, in particular, to the P S A P managers, uh, working with the MR nine one one office. Um, so uh, Liz, I don't know if you have any additional insight to the role of uh your office with the P S apps.
Um, I think that was just asking as a liaison and um helping them in areas, especially with the technical team. When they have a question on something that they might come to be able to provide that uh kind of assistance. Whether it's something that is actually in our wheelhouse or um acting as a sounding board on things that they might want our looking at. So, um, but pretty much, well, we are um acting as staff and as a liaison and uh for the P S apps.
Uh, and actually, Mr. Chairman, I'll look to Liz Graber to round out some of these more technical aspects of regional process.
Okay, and so the backup system, um. I'm assuming that this is on the backup of networking. I'm not sure what is meant exactly by the backup system on this one. But we'll go through staffing, so our staffing is set um with um. With the technical staff, we have five, uh, what we call nine one one technicians, that's the line level on-call technicians we have. We just created a vacancy with the promotion of Nick Hooten. Um, we have two senior level staff, uh, eleven, um, Nick Hooten and Corey Plute, Corey is over. The day-to-day maintenance and Nick is assisting with networking and NG nine one one project. We have a lead that's Nate Newan, he is our project coordinator for your upgrades. Uh, Dave Dancivikas, who is our networking um architect, and then Mike Benjamin is our. Nine one one technical manager. We have in GIS Dave Eaton, who uh does the. They manage the GIS information for the region along with Angela Beatty, who is our uh GIS technician. Um, Dave is a GIS manager. He also oversees sands and making sure that that is working appropriately. And that the information, the dates and the geocoding is done on sands as well. And then he assists with the text to nine one one uh browser on the map. And he also does the nine one one mapping for our map, and he is involved in. Um, the wireless routing sheets that we receive from the wireless carriers that assigns role to the cell sectors of every cell tower. Um, and so they make sure that the that those are working, and if there's any issues with the wireless alley or. How calls are routing, that's another thing that he goes through. Then we have Robin Kramer, who is our administrative person that helps with the. Uh, management of procurement through the city procurement system, also takes notes and in all of our staff meetings and helps with administrative things. Uh, managed services. So managed services, I'm assuming is, why is managed services not part of the regional process? Um, that was something that we discussed in two thousand sixteen that the member agencies did, and that's what came out of the study committee on the decision to do that. And when the strategic plan was approved, that was the orders that we have to what we, my, me and my team needed to follow when the regional councils gave stats. So that's what we had been moving towards um on that. When if nine one one as a um as a call, as a service or call handling as a service. That also is something that uh can be considered, but it hasn't been brought up through the regional process. A lot of uh agencies have requested, but haven't received any requests to put that on the agenda at all to discuss. So next, why do Zimbar nine one one retain control over management policy routing? Um, we don't control it other than technically, because we do have to make the actual moves, because we're the nine. Um, manager, so when you want to change something for that system to work, my guys have to log in and make those changes. And so that's why we control it. We have offered up the P Saps, um, we thought that it would be best to start with alternate routing with two. Uh, to until we understood the complexity of it, but in June's P S A P manager meeting, it was put out to all the member agencies. If you wanted more um, a more complex alternate routing plan, that you absolutely were welcome to do that. Um, Karen Southern of the NG nine one one oversight team put out an email to all the P S A P managers, asking them, gave them a really. In-depth form for them to fill out on how um their alternate routing would go with the request that they mail those into us. And so far, we only had received two from our P S A P managers. The vendor and equipment discussions, we do that, um, the help vet to make sure that um. What the vendors are providing are the things that qualify for nine one one funds. Um, and to make sure that we're not getting things that uh are going to just sit and collect dust. We found that when we first started, that vendors were loading up the quotes, because P Saps did not understand all the components. Uh, with different things, and we were able to sift through those and find cost savings on things that they didn't use. Or it's not how their call flow worked. And so that's not to say that the P Saps can't be involved in those conversations, but as the. Technical team that has to provide maintenance, we wanted to be involved in those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Graber. Any questions on this slide? Yes, Smith up?
So I, I can understand what Liz is saying as far as we haven't put managed services on the agenda. Um, and I don't know that that would be a good starting point anyway. But we have had many conversations in P S A P manager meetings about the type of equipment that we would like to be able to use within our agencies. Um, we have discussed uh the ability to hot seat, we have discussed laptops. Um, we lost the ability to use the multi-node phone systems. Um, because it was difficult uh for service from MR nine one one. We haven't been able to move forward in a lot of the ways that we would like to. And those things have been discussions that have come up in the P S A P manager meetings. Um, so no, we've stopped short of going to manage services as an agenda item at this point. Um, I think that those questions are coming up now because of the frustration that's being felt. Because we're unable to really have conversations that drive us forward in the P S A P manager meetings. Um, sometimes uh we feel like we're, we're not really able, either those conversations have to be taken offline. Or they're completely shut down and uh we're not really supposed to bring them up. And I totally agree with Liz that MR nine one one should be a part of any kind of technical discussions that we're having. But so should the P S A P managers, and I think that it's sort of at a point right now where the P S A P managers are the folks that are not involved. In the conversations with the vendors and uh sometimes by the time we find out what we could or couldn't have, it's too late. And so that's where those, these frustration conversations are coming from, from my point of view.
Thank you. Mr. Stillwell?
Uh, thanks, Jim Stillwell, MCSO, uh, to build on what Karen said and to um. Get a confirmation from something that Mr. Pryor said at the beginning of his remarks. I want to confirm that MR nine one one is a supporting entity to the P Saps. That they do not provide any uh direct control over what we do or do not do. Uh, if me as an agency, I want to buy a specific widget, yes, they should very much have uh input and tell me if they can or cannot do that. Uh, but I want to confirm that ultimately that decision lies with me as an agency as to what we want to purchase or not purchase. Um, but and then a second point, uh, off of what Liz mentioned, talking about uh. Noticing in the past that vendors had loaded up contracts and and software packages purchased, P Saps not knowing what they don't or do have. Uh, she also said at the beginning of of her comment that MR nine one one is a liaison. Well, isn't it that liaison's job to find out what is in that contract and to share that with the P S A P and to help us learn what's in that product? And making sure we're using what we're getting? And I'll yield.
Mr. Pryor, do you want to take the first part of the question and answer that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, there are some points in there. I I'm going to address those, I think, probably in the next part of the next slides.
Okay. And then the second part, you want to respond to, Ms. Graber?
Um, I don't know if it was a question. I understand what Mr. Stillwell is saying.
Thank you.
More so of a comment, if if you have a reply, though, I would love to hear it.
Thank you. I think she's heard that and acknowledged that. Thank you. Ms. Weber?
Thank you. So let's back up. I've got a couple of questions. I'll break it up so we can follow it easier. For reference the backup system, um, reading the questions, I can only surmise, since it's not listed on there, that the questions surrounding backup systems are. Um, twofold, one is technology, the other is operational. Technology wise, why do we have our network centers thirty miles apart? I think one of the managers submitted that, um, if there was a natural disaster in the valley, we're done, we're down. There's no true backup system on that. So as we're looking at our infrastructure in the long term, how do we address that issue to make sure that we stay functional? Um, the other part of that for backup system is Lindy, I'll quote what you said on the question. She asked, understaffing is a major concern in all P Saps, as the second largest P S A P Mesa in the valley, our backup is Phoenix. As they are the ones, only ones who would be able to handle the call volume. Staffing would not be able to handle the call volume of two major agencies on both accounts, Mesa and Phoenix. And then she asks, is there a better backup system as opposed to the current? And how do we implement that?
Um, Chairman, so the backup system that what uh Mesa brought up, Lindy brought up with Mesa. That's completely up to the P S app. So how you develop, how Phoenix PD decides who takes their calls and how that's divided? That's completely up to the P S apps. That's not anything we direct. When you contact our office, we never dictate you need to do backups to this agency. You're the ones that contact us to say, we would like our calls, uh, if we have to go into make busy or anything to be rerouted appropriately. So if Mesa and Phoenix believe that Mesa does not want to serve them anymore and doesn't want to take on that role. Then Phoenix is up on them to come up with that plan. That's not anything that I design. That comes from the member agencies.
Thank you. Then the follow-up question to that, that also um addresses the selective router. Issue, I think that was one of the topics that we discussed on this slide. Um, with the selective router, maybe in the past, we could only do backup agencies when we're going to make busy. But now with the new technology of being able to pivot and I could split my nine one one calls between five agencies. My question to you is, why are we initially, when we had the ESI net discussions? It was shared and um we were educated about how nimble the system could be. But then it came down to, let's set it up our, how we want it routed, and we were told that we will only select a primary and a secondary P S A P. That to me is not utilizing the system to its full extent. So and then part of that, sorry for making this lengthy. Um, why is the control of the selective router and activating it still resting with MR nine one one? When there's going to be a thirty minute delay from the time that we contact you, by that time, our emergency is over. Everything, it's already settled down, and any help that we could have gotten would be mute at that point. So please explain to me why we can't have control that, why cannot, why can P S A P managers not have? Access to that and control our own operations if MR nine one is a liaison and a support mechanism only.
So Liz, may I address that?
Yes, Mike Benjamin, I you?
The, the technology that uh, Kim, that you're referring to as as far as P Saps' ability to. Get in to manage their call flow and so forth, that's not been deployed yet. We are still on our IP selective routers. Uh, our projects have been pushed back uh by the state. Their project has been now months and months pushed back due to issues with with their vendors, AT&amp;T and and other parts of the state. So currently, our IP selective routers uh do not have an interface that would allow for a general user to configure their uh alternate routing. If a P S app is interested in additional layers of of alternate routing, uh, we are uh fully able to do that. Uh, at a previous meeting, Ms. Sutherland discussed about a production uh proof of concept trial that was executed with. Three P S apps where load sharing of of calls was uh demonstrated and uh used in production for a period of time. The initial use of a scaled back alternate routing plan is just that. It's just an initial use of that plan to allow us to see what the new tools in the state next-gen core services project bring to the table. If it is uh brought forward that uh these tools make it simple enough that in a secure manner. P S apps would be able to manage their own calls, say, on the fly or dynamically. There'd be no reason for us to keep P S apps from being able to uh manage things. Uh, we will be using the same tool sets. We are part of the state's next-gen core services project. We're using the same vendors. We have the the same tool sets. You you will have no less functionality than. Other P S apps in in the state. Many of those P S apps, again, have not got to see that that functionality yet. Because these projects have been delayed due to vendor concerns.
Yep, and so following up as far as the um, the ability to go then more than just to, as I said earlier. That I didn't get a lot of pushback from P S apps when I suggested that, and that's what it was, a suggestion. And in the June uh P S A P managers meeting, I told the P S apps, they were more than welcome to give uh more complexity. We were, can do that if they wish. Um, Karen from Scottsdale saw that she would like to have more complexity and came up with a really detailed plan to allow you to have. Um, more information on how you want your calls routed. And like I said, those were, she sent those out to all the P S apps managers to complete, and I've only received two. So if you have those, fill them out, send them our way, and we'll be happy to implement them.
Thank you. Ms. Weber?
Thank you. I think you're misunderstanding my question. I understand that we don't have that technology activated yet. That it is in the works and should be active November, whenever we cut in the county agencies, Maricopa County. The concern is that we are already being told that we won't have control over the selective, our ability to dictate the policy routing of our calls. Where other counties on AT&amp;T system can, the PSEPS managers can directly route their calls or impact the policy routing for their PSEPS that they want to. I want that ability to that because I know in Gilbert, if we have an emergency, a massive situation, I need this to go to whatever agency right away. And I can impact that versus having to call up MR 911 and wait for you to activate that. Whatever that time delay is a time delay. And we're in the emergency services, public safety, every second counts. And so that's my question is, why are we already being told that we can't utilize this technology the way it's designed to? And the second part of that is, I disagree with you, Liz. The message that you gave the managers wasn't that we had a choice. That right now, this is what we're going to do, primary and secondary. And I'll quote your response to Karen's. And kudos to Karen for proactively meeting with the agencies that will be impacted by the Super Bowl and waste management. Is that now we are several months ahead of that major event in the valley that will impact the entire county. Is how do we anticipate these emergencies that will happen? How do we anticipate an overflow, an overload of 911 calls for any PSEPS and mitigate that? Knowing that we have this NGCS system and all of these technologies that will be implemented before then. She sent you a very detailed plan of how we would mitigate those calls. If Scottsdale were to get overrun because of their waste management, how it would flow. Your response to her, to that detailed plan was, hi Karen, we will need to discuss the technical, technical aspect of your plan. I am not sure if the selective routers can censor access, how many calls you have in queue in each of your system. We set up the alternate routing test we did early this year as a round robin or call sharing. We need to discuss with Mike and different options on the 911 call sharing. So that to me, your response was that it's not possible, that you don't understand the technology and what it can do.
And I'll let Mike Benjamin confirm this for me. So I think we're talking about two instances. So the alternate routing that you, that we said just to that one, I did say that we're welcome to do more complexity and Karen sent out a form for people to fill out. That one is separate from what you're discussing. Unbeknownst to MR 911, Karen was leading a proactive group on how during, for the Super Bowl, what it, how can we do alternate routing with, you would do call load sharing that we had, did a proof of concept earlier. And in the plan, and this was not discussed or tried when we did the testing. So I'm not sure where it got the idea that if calls were in queue, that the selective router would know that Gilbert PD is not, they've got calls that are not being answered, that they're listening to the recording and that it would know, you know what, I'm going to start sending calls over to another PSEPS. I don't know if that's, you could program that into the system. And I, you know, said we need to meet and that, and then I heard from Karen yesterday for an update. So that, those are two different things that you're talking about. You're talking about call routing, call load sharing, and that's what I was referring to.
And I apologize, that, that is not what I was referring to. I understand the call loading test that you did and how that we can do call sharing with the agencies. I am talking about the new technology that's going to be cut live in November that allows us to activate this policy routing that will help our agencies significantly.
Can I ask a question? Can, can you describe what you, what capabilities you feel you'll be able to have with policy call routing? I'm, I'm a bit confused because the, the techno, the newer technology is going to look very, very similar. It will give the possibility of possibly breaking calls up by percentages. It will give some capability that basically mimics what, what we have today. But I, I'm curious if there are some features that, that you are really interested in that you could describe for us.
So I'm not going to masquerade as an IT expert because I definitely am not, or else I would not be in this.
Question, though, this is a question about policy routing.
It's exactly what you said, that if I wanted to break 5% of my calls and send it to Mesa and the other 10% to Chandler, what I want is as a PSEPS manager at my local agency that I can do that. What infrastructure do we have set up at MR 911 that prevents that?
Again, that is not a product that's been, been rolled out here. We can't make an assessment as to the flexibility of that until we actually get that put into production. We would like to see that. We've signed on to the Next Gen Core Services project with the state. We're waiting for, for our turn. I'm, I'm not sure how to project the capabilities or lack of capabilities or the desirability of those capabilities on your behalf until we are able to see those, not just what they say they will do, but actually what they do versus the, I don't want to call it the hype or the sales pitch. But it seems like there's a lot of agitation over you being blocked from functionality that is, is just not existent yet in, in the system.
No, sir. Let me rephrase then. If we are still in, on the roadmap of implementing this technology, I fully understand that that is not active yet, that we do not have it right now. But as technology leaders, as support for our technology for 911, if you know this is on the roadmap, this is coming up. My expectation is that you ask the PSEPS managers what we desire to do. And I'm telling you from my perspective, my desire is to have control over my call operations and how my calls are managed. And if I have that capability, my request of MR 911 is as you develop this and you work with Comtech, is you investigate, how do we give that ability, that authority to the PSEPS manager? That was what my request is, not some hype or sales pitch for the new technology is. Knowing that you're planning for this, plan for it now, start asking the questions now. How do we give PSEPS managers the access? Don't come to us back in January after we've cut and said, oh, maybe we can do this. And now we're scrambling to go back and redo what is set up. That is my request.
Thank you. To help keep the movie moving, I think that your request has been, has been made clear. I assume that Liz and Mike have heard that and take note of that, and they can have those conversations. Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi, good morning. Santiago Rodriguez, good year PD. I'm new to the group, but who is the gentleman that's speaking over there? He has no name tag and I'm just trying to figure out what his title is and what his expertise is in this.
I'll introduce him. Chief Rodriguez, this is Mike Benjamin, the 911 Technical Manager. He oversees the 911 system and the technicians and the 911 network that we do wireless call routing on and is a big part of the Next Generation Core Services.
Thank you. I'm just trying to gather it all in, but thanks.
All right. Are there any other questions on this slide? Ms. Weber?
I'm sorry. I just need to make one more comment and clarify when Michael Benjamin stated there were delays in the NGCS system. As the study committee convenes and discusses this and investigates these, I request that you dig into that a little bit more. My understanding in meeting with the technology vendors that there is a portion of the delay that goes back to MR 911. I don't want this to be a blame session, but we need to, the facts before us and to investigate it and, and figure out what's going on. That Comtech had to have lots of meetings and back and forths regarding the network architecture, what MR 911 wanted, wanted to do with NGCS system. So as we look at that, investigate in how we're managing this and implementing the, the platform. And that ends my segment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other question on this slide? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Ms. Greber?
Next slide. It's administrator area concern, communications and accountability. There was a lot of questions on who I'm accountable to and my lack of communication and transparency. I wanted to address these. And accountability, I am accountable to multiple areas. I've always had, feel like I have to report to two bosses. And one is through my employment with the city of Phoenix, in which my direct supervisor is Chief Walker. And as through MAG, he's also the 911 oversight, as it happens, on this rotation. Through Chief Walker, I am also accountable to the, I am accountable to the Phoenix Fire Chief and to the city of Phoenix itself on what I do on behalf of them. As they have a contract with MAG and their contract with MAG falls into our section and making sure that we're meeting everything that's in that contract. I'm accountable to the MAG process, to the PSEPS managers. And if there are issues, always welcome to take it to the 911 Oversight Committee. They do have the ability to escalate that all the way through the MAG process where complaints ultimately could be heard by the mayors. So that's my second half of it. We have, as far as the accounting portion of it, we are, the city of Phoenix has its own grants section in the city, the fire department's financial department. They're the ones that do all the accountability, the counting of all the invoices that we pay, the grant request for reimbursement. So they take that portion on themselves on what's being spent and submitting it. In communications, I apologize if, if my communications hasn't met your needs. That's something that we can work on, I think, going forward, especially with the complexity of what NG 911 is going to bring us. And the differences that, the changing as we, you've mentioned throughout this, technology changes so quickly. I think that it has helped us in the past to have a good relationship. I apologize that we no longer have that relationship. We were able to work together when we put in text to 911, when we were able to do rapid SOS on our mappings and able to get that information as we went through phase two deployment in 2005. All of these things we did as region and it made our, those projects successful. So I'm committing myself to communicate better and be accountable to any questions. I've always said to the PSEPS can call and ask any questions. To me, I'd be happy to answer them. The one thing I will, I do follow is the process of MAG. I can't deviate from that. So when you want to have something that you want to speak about on, at a public meeting, you do need to have that on the agenda. So when I asked that we hold off on discussing those, those were nothing on the agenda. So when you call and say, Liz, I want to talk about 911 overtime like Sean again, I could put that on the agenda to discuss because we have to post that agenda. The public has to be aware of it. It can't be anything, items that are held back till the morning of the discussion. And Nathan, if I'm wrong on that assumption, please correct me now. But that's how we communicate. So I don't want to suppress anything, but I also am very careful that I'm following the rules of public meetings.
Mr. Stillwell? Jim Stillwell, MCSO. Regarding the agenda, I, I fully understand, recognize and support what you said. However, speaking of June's meeting, there was an agenda item where Mr. Pryor spoke. The, the committee prior to that meeting had no idea that Mr. Pryor was going to speak. However, that, that agenda item was listed as information only. So it did not allow for any discussion. I myself that day had two pages of questions written down that I wanted to ask Mr. Pryor, but I was unable to because it was an information piece and not a discussion piece. I plan to ask those questions during the open comments at the end of the meeting. However, that did not occur because the chair of the committee adjourned that meeting extremely quickly at the last item. She did not allow time for anybody that had questions during that meeting to, to ask them. And, and I will yield.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lindy, go go you Mesa. I appreciate your apology about the communication, but I kind of feel like I needed to touch on this because it was one of my topics that I wrote in on. Being relatively newer, we took over, and I believe it was the end of March. This is what the view I've had so far. So our relationship is relatively new. I know personally, I've reached out to you as well as my manager, Crystal, and via email with zero acknowledgement, zero response when it was brought up. Again, you actually reached out to the previous PSEPS manager who no longer works in our area. So to me, that kind of left a bad taste in my mouth as for what our communication is going to look like going further. So since you said you're going to work on that, what can we expect from you in the future? Reference emails or phone calls, communication, anything like that, since you openly said to reach out to you? And when we do, we don't get a response.
Lindy, I'll commit to answering all your emails in a timely manner. And I apologize about not giving you the information on where you have your user manuals located in your PSEPS. But I, that's why I reached, reached out to Christine to see if she knew when you did your upgrades. And she was over at that time, that she'd have the ability to tell us where that was at. And that's why there was a delay. And I should have let you know that I wasn't sure and that I was going to be talking to Christine on your behalf to find out where those were.
Which, had you reached out, that's not actually what I needed. I needed the most updated version, which I was able to obtain outside of, of your assistance. So had you just reached out to me, we could have had more open communication, which would have facilitated a better relationship. Like I said, I'm relatively new, building new relationships.
Okay, noted.
Thank you. Mr. Pryor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committees. Just regarding communication accountability, by way of reminder, the chairs set, ultimately set and approved the agenda. So if there's a topic that's, you know, not, you know, being mentioned, please contact your chair of your respective committee. They ultimately approve the agendas. As staff, we know that time to time Liz's group has updates to provide. And that's usually what we go through at our committee meetings. But these two committees, as in all committees at MAG, ultimately it's the, the chair that upsets and approves the agenda. So any topic that, that needs to be discussed under the purview of those committees is certainly available for the chairs to, to advance for those meetings. So just, just noting that, of course. Regarding some of the accountability communication, I think it was two weeks ago at the PSEPS managers meeting, it was discussion about budget and expenditures. And I think at that time, just one example is that with some regularity, frequency regarding expenditures, that the, that too could be a topic of conversation at PSEPS managers, at 911 Oversight Team, again, trying to reach this kind of transparency as to what's going on regarding budget and expenditures throughout the course of a fiscal year. So that, that's an example, again, of something that can certainly be done. So I think it's good, you know, with these committees meeting and having discussions like this, that there's opportunities to, to, of course, that these issues seemingly a bit overdue just by the, the number of questions and comments received. But hopefully, again, not only working with, with MAG staff and MR 911 staff, but also with each other and chair, the members of chair of the respective committee at that time to advance topics for conversation. So just noting that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions on this slide? Seeing none, Ms. Greber?
Questions on funding and budget. Why were Tempe, Scottsdale, Glendale's quotes from fiscal year 2022 projects didn't include best to citizen input, smart transcription, invest a local? Please explain how MR 911 entertains requests to fund positions. What is MR 911 going to do to be more responsible in using funds? For the first one, Tempe, when we started the quote process for them, we had not been made aware that the state was going to allow for additional We had not been made aware that the state was going to allow for um additional information to be quoted. So usually the vendor quotes it as optional. Um I've reached out to both Tempe, Scottsdale and Glendale and advise them that we would be. Uh we could submit those as a budget amendment. The state requires us that when we need to buy something that wasn't on the budget, that we need to do a budget amendment and documentation. So that's why I requested that um a letter of justification, Tempe sent me one uh yesterday. Um to that I can turn into the state, go into the grant portal and submit those along with the quotes to get those installed. And so we'll submit those and if the one the state gets funding, then if the state gives us funding, we can sit and schedule those. Um and my nine one one, it's explaining, explains to request to fund positions, so we don't fund positions. Um we never turn down positions on what uh from the P S apps. The P S apps are requested around May every year if they'd like additional positions. Um the governance group came up with a set of questions and needs. That the documentations that the P S apps would have to provide had they asked for positions. Um and so that's one of the things we do request that they turn in uh those things. Um those are included uh on the budget, I don't edit those off on the requests. Those requests then move on and go through the Mag process uh for their approval of the additional positions. And then that's the, well, when I get the final approval from Regional Council, that's the budget that I put into the state. Grant and then the state has its own. Or really that they will fund positions and so when positions have been denied, it's but with state funding. So they've not, they've not funded extra positions and that's how. And it's not anything that we do on saying, we've never said we can't put in for position. Will we accept anyone that wants to add that in, we put that in as part of the budget. Um and so I know I've talked about this before, we have had uh nine one one funds left on the table. Um and that turned into approximately two point five million that was left on the table. And I've explained what the, why those monies were left. And I think that it's valid request to have us meet um quarterly or as often as the P S apps want. Every other, every month, I mean every other month when we have our meetings discuss. If there's a possibility to redirect funds, if there are overages that we can plan out to see. Uh we just want to be cautious that we're not spending monies of a project that is further down the end of the fiscal year. And we want to be able to use those, so I think that that is something that we can help. Um dark communication on what the monies are left over for. And the monies aren't necessarily left in my uh fund at City of Phoenix. What we do as part of the grant is we um, City of Phoenix pays for all the equipment, services and everything upfront. And then we have to go through the process of requesting reimbursement, so that nine million dollar, ten million dollar, whatever the budget is. The City of Phoenix has to agree that they will up, fund it upfront and then we seek reimbursement from the state. So the state's holding on to those monies um until we ask for reimbursement after the such is paid for. Um the state does have, uh that they roll over um ones unspent monies uh year after year. And and so that if if there was a concern about P S apps outside the region needing those. There are monies in the state coffers um that that two point five million dollars could have been, you know, state. Oh had other monies besides it that they could put towards any needs, so I don't know what that looks like and I don't know what needs from P S apps. Outside of the region, but that's basically how we um, that's my vision of how we can be more responsible and use our funds appropriately. And to keeping it within the region.
Thank you, any questions on this slide? Yes, Ms. Hallett.
Liz, um my question is on on the first one is why do we have to provide any type of justification? I understand on an amendment, but it's already been provided to other agencies, would, why would we need to justify the use of equipment that's utilized for nine one one?
Loretta, I do as a precaution because um I put stuff to the state and they requested detailed documentation on why I'm asking for amendment. But I can just put in the, an amendment with nothing and see if it applies, but that's why I do it. It's it's process they request them, so to help that documentation, that's why I reached out and asked for this uh agencies to do that.
Okay, and have you responded on the, I haven't seen the response from the intergo that actually sent you that request. Um have you responded on that, on the, what was requested for that?
No, I was going to put all three of them together, Scottsdale, Tempe and Glendale.
Ms. Weber?
It's just like an online meeting with your mute button. So regarding budget and accountability. There's two parts of the first part uh is why has M R nine one one not followed the grant contract? There's been multiple concerns and aspects where we have not adhered to the grant contract. What's, what's the explanation for that?
Um the grant contract uh asks that reports be turned in to uh fire fiscal by the, I want to say the twenty fifth. Um of the end of the month and some are um fiscal management hasn't been able to get those in on those times. So those are the grant violations that they're talking about. And then at the end of the year, we did request, they did send in reimbursement requests of um one point. I want to say one point and two million uh of closing and they um saw that as grant violation as well.
So are you saying that you're not responsible for so many invoices, there's another entity that's doing that?
I'm saying that it's part of our process in the city of Phoenix, those were late. But the other thing you need to consider about the grant is the grant is monies, is not a grant monies that the state has gotten through grant. As they pass down other types of grants to us, the grant uh monies is funds that are paid through nine one one funds. Collected from the citizens every month on their phone bill and that's monies collected by the state. In two thousand and um two thousand and eighteen, when the state proposed going to this format. They explained that this was not a true grant and that it was actually a way for them to manage the funds better. So uh in the past, there's been flexibility on missing dates because it's not a true grant as you would get um from Homeland Security. And that it's actually funds that the taxpayers are paying and the share the state has become more. To the letter of the law on it, and so we will follow the letter of the law as best we can.
So thank you for bringing up the excise tax and I've said this before and I want to reiterate the concern regarding money left on the table. It's not that we're being cautious on what we spend or not spending for projects and going over money for projects. It's the fact that as a region, we're asking for ten million dollars and we're not actually using ten million dollars. How does that look to the state when we come back the next year and ask for a similar amount or close to that? My response if I was the state would be, well, you didn't use all the ten million, why do, why are you asking for the same amount? Do you really need it? When we have P S apps in the eight, in the county that are not getting consoles funded, that are not getting technologies reimbursed. So that to me is not, it's not working, whatever we're doing to some, to submit budget. Um and the other thing about that is we know as a state, our excise tax is the lowest in the nation. As one of the prosperous states in the nation, why is our excise tax for nine one one the lowest? When we have an influx of population year after year, we need this funding to increase our P S app's ability to be able to operate. And it get the technology that we need and keep the people that we need. So for us, we're not helping our situation by quote unquote leaving money on the table. When we've got money in the coffers, how do we come back to the legislature and say, we need an increase in taxes? So that's my statement for that, I know I've said it before, I just want to reiterate why this is a concern regarding the budget process, thank you.
Um Chairman, Ms. Weber, I just want to make sure that you understand, we we don't uh. The reimbursement of consoles or the additional positions that are requested is in the patrol of the state for approval. So yes, that two point five million could have funded the five positions you put in for or what good years. So but that would have been the state's decision, not ours.
And if we were working cooperatively with the state and having that open communication where we're not absorbing. The majority of the funding, that the state can work with us and say, okay, now that we have funding spread out more evenly. That agencies across the state, rural or what, are getting what they need, then we will get what we need too.
Well, we went by a formula that the state did, that that was, it was very simple, we showed it and they told us the the. The phone count, the collection of who could, how many calls you answer per position as compared to the state as a whole. So that's how they determine who got funded for extra positions and who didn't, it's not how much money we had left over.
And I take that as a state trying to establish a process so that everyone gets what they need fairly. Um referencing us as a county, a region on our accountability to how we are requesting these funds and how we're using it. And when we talk about communication and relationships, it's not just with this group, it's our relationship with the state and other P S apps across the state as well. To be able to be a nine one one infrastructure and area of, you know, prosperity, be able to do that. And that's what I'm ref- referencing.
Thank you, uh Ms. Turner.
I just wanted to um kind of add on to what she said and I understand what you're saying, Liz, in that. Uh the state sets a formulas, who gets what, but as more funds are available and utilized accurately. More resources can be allocated and I think that's all we're trying to point out is that when we. In essence, hoard funding, it 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 impedes what we can give as resources, not to just. P S apps in Maricopa County, but P S apps throughout the state, that formula is used throughout the whole state. It's one they came up with to try to be equitable and um. But as there is more funding available, that formula can change and more resources can be allocated and not just positions. But it can go to training or it can go to recorders or it can go to other assets. So as a, as a region, we need to be more fiscally responsible with the funds we are given. So that they can be allocated more accurately.
Mr. Stillwell? Jim Stillwell, M C S O, um comment on a piece that Kim mentioned about. Uh submitting reimbursement requests uh prior to deadlines. So if it's a grant, if it's not a grant, it's all semantics. Uh the fact is, is it may not be law, but it's definitely a rule, there's a deadline to submit requests for reimbursement. Uh and to be uh flippant about it or to uh flagrantly. Dismiss the request to have these deadlines met is uh not only a disservice to the P S apps and to the uh uh the state. But also to the citizens, so uh we know when the bills are due, uh submit your requests, submit them in a timely manner. Uh and when, and when you don't, there should be repercussions.
I would just want to apologize to Mr. Stillwell, I did not mean to be flippant when I gave that answer.
You said them?
Karen Sutherland, Scottsdale P D, uh I just want to go back a little bit to this slide uh regarding the Vesta equipment. Um I think one of the things that we, that started bringing us to this table and these communications. Is as we began learning the equipment that was available to us. And that we only learned that by attending conferences and communicating with the vendors and with each other. Uh some of the agencies here don't even feel like they had a choice on their phone equipment and they were just upgraded to the system that they already had. Um and that system has been deemed to be inferior everywhere else in the state and some of the departments are still claiming problems with it two years later. Um as far as citizen input, smart transcription, best of map, local and even um. The bandwidth that's required to run those in multiple conversations with more than one vendor and and people that come to the table. They've informed us over and over again as a group and individually that they were asked by M R nine one one not to allow the managers to know what was available to them. That's a big problem here. As managers, when we were talking a little bit earlier about being involved in our decision process. When we start hearing from all of these vendors that they're not supposed to talk to us. And that uh when they're giving demos, that they should hold back on the information that we could use to make decisions for our P S apps. Um and then we have to find that out by attending a demo in another state. Or somewhere where M R nine one one is not, that becomes a real, a real problem for us. And this is how we've had to learn about a lot of the technology that's out there. Uh a question that keeps coming up time and time again is whether or not the bandwidth exists within M R nine one one. To even supply us with what we need to run some of these programs that are a part of NG nine one one. And in P S app manager meetings, uh M R nine one one staff has said that there's a concern with the bandwidth. And um we've had these conversations over and over again. And when we tried to talk with the vendors to determine what we could use and what we couldn't use, they've told us all. M R nine one one will not tell us what the bandwidth is, so now we're faced with uh Glendale, Scottsdale, Tempe. Before this um amendment process came up just recently, we were faced with having to make a decision. On whether to spend somewhere between sixty and a hundred thousand dollars per agency for equipment that we don't know if the bandwidth could support. And we don't have any way of finding that out. And that's, that's a problem for us, these these budgeted funds, if I, if I need to ask my department for a hundred thousand dollars. I need to know that it's going to work when I get the the equipment that I'm asking for. Um but over and over again, we keep hearing this, we're not allowed to share this with you or M R nine one one. So that to me is a huge frustration.
Chief Walker, Karen. The vendor you're talking about is Vesta and um they were doing that, they were doing demos for um Phoenix P D. And they were doing line levels, so Phoenix P D's managers had already come through them and I was asked. Um to tell the vendor just to show them how it works, everything about it, not to go through the add-ons, but just to show them the line level. How everything works as far as um transfer, all the day to day stuff that you'd be using.
Any other questions on this slide?
So I just want to make a comment um on the budget and um monies left on the table. Again, it's not going to be a question, but I just find it interesting that we continue to hear different numbers being found. You know, you hear uh four million and maybe that's changed because there is an extension to the deadline, now it's two and a half million. Um but last week in the Oversight Committee, Ms. Greber stated it's a million. So I just find it interesting that depending on the audience or depending on the conversation, the the numbers change. And I do feel that it's a good idea that as we move forward within our P S app manager group, that we do add an agenda item. Uh through each of our meetings, not quarterly, that there's transparency regarding funding and um. Anything being submitted through the grant and seeing what that dollar amount is and comparing it to what the state uh shows. To make sure that um everything's equal now, then again, that's just a comment.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next slide, just want to comment on that, if if there, I've never said that there was one million left. That might be what was given to us as far as um on the last payment, one point two million. And I'll go back and double check, but I apologize if that was the case, uh it is uh two point five million. The state was given a, an inflated number because they had run the um before the last submit, they ran their report before the last submit, so.
Thank you, and I think you've heard the concerns about budget management and they've talked about the need to be communicate with the P S I manage on that. Yes, thank you. Anything else on this slide?
I see none. Ms. Graber.
Next slide. Maintenance and projects. There must be a service ticketing system whereby PSAPs can track their tickets. This is something that I'll let Mike Benjamin talk to. I thought this was a valid concern that have a little more robust way to track the tickets, and I'll let him discuss that one as well as NG 911, can MR 911 continue to sustain the years to come? If you can give us a brief on that. And please explain and define service interruptions and outages.
Thank you, Liz. Mike Benjamin, Maricopa Region 911 Technical Manager. Ticket system improvement to allow more access for PSAP managers to the ticketing system. This is feasible with our current case management system. Discussions and decisions will be needed associated with how this is hosted and from what devices the information will be available from. We 100% recognize the convenient access is highly desirable. Should not be lost in the conversation that the convenience factor is desirable and even tactical for our technical staff as well. We need to engage a PSAP community to reconcile convenience and security concerns. In the ticketing system, there is oftentimes shared very sensitive security items that we want to make sure that do not get out into the public space. And we will work to establish a secure means to better share meaningful case update information with our PSAPs. I can pause there for comments, questions regarding this question.
Ms. Burnett.
Just a quick question on that, Mike. Do you have a time limit on what we're looking at, maybe possibly getting this going and maybe getting it implemented?
We could move on this very quickly with internal access where we don't have to cross the boundary, putting it out into the the public space. So many of the the PSAPs in the community, besides the Sense Machine, you also have been afforded a manager PC that depending on the cabling situation at your PSAP and proximity to equipment rooms and so forth, that manager PC is something that we can locate either in a supervisor area or a manager's office and a ticketing system could be made available from there.
Thank you.
Shawna Henry, Goodyear PD. Can you expound a little bit on the stand what the security concern is there's in a PSAP?
So it's not a concern of sharing that information with you. It would be a concern that if this was not deployed in a secure manner, that it was available over the internet, that it could be compromised potentially, and information regarding details within the 911 system could be exposed in in to a public purview. So that ticket system at this point just has not been exposed in that manner. It's it's internal. Before moving it external, we would want to make sure that we have done our due diligence to be able to support putting that in a more public facing manner where it can be consumed.
Ms. Webber.
I appreciate that you're bringing this up and and offering a solution. However, your solution is still unacceptable. To put it on a machine that I still have to walk out of my office, onto the floor, back into the server room to access a program is no better than an email being sent into hundreds of other emails that I get. If the CEGIS system can have web access, then why can't we access our 911 tickets on that?
Well, I didn't say that you'd have to go out to your supervisor console if if your office is if it's feasible to cable into your office. I believe your previous PSAP manager may have had a management PC in in that office. We would, on an individual case basis, just depending on your office layout, have to make a determination if we can extend connection from the 911 network in into your office. And historically, the case management system had not been an item that here we are 17 years into it, and it had not been an item that had been requested for public consumption or consumption from public places, say Wi-Fi or or just general web browsing and so forth.
I'll I'll give my feedback, and the other managers are going to have to speak up and give their feedback too. But I'm telling you from my perspective, putting it on a hard PC, whether it's in my office, so taking a machine from my dispatchers or my supervisors on the floor to put in my office for my convenience is still unacceptable. My request is that you look at technology that is available. And again, if the CEGIS criminal justice system can put their information to be accessed via a portal, why can't we? We need to be able to do that. That is available now. It's not something that technology is preventing us from doing that.
There may have been some misunderstanding. I was responding to Ms. Renee's question about what we could do in a timely manner. I said we could in a more timely manner, give you the availability of it in a Sense Machine, supervisor machine, or a PSAP manager machine. We will continue to look at putting it out in the more traditional public sense, if you will, where you would be able to log in to see it remotely. Right now, sitting right here, I can't give you a fixed date on on when we would present that.
And then your request is it's clear, I think, what your direction and I assume the group's direction. Ms. Sutherland.
I just wanted to mention that the email service that we're using right now with all of the sensitive information is over the internet, and we are receiving it right now on our phones and at home and on multiple computers. And if the same information would be in your ticketing system as the updates that you're sending in the email system right now, I'm not clear on where the additional concern is.
That items is noted, the the threat at that point would be that your email would be compromised and that information would be exposed if we don't don't send this out via just to anyone that's sent pointedly to very specific email recipients.
Melvin.
Yes, Patrick Melvin, MCSO. Realizing the time and the comments and the overall appears consensus in the room with what you've heard so far. And I can see the direction we're going. What is your, how can you give us some feeling of comfort that we're going to be moving forward positively for the betterment of all of the participants in the room?
Ms. Graber.
Chief Walker, Chief Melvin, you have my commitment that will that we as the MR 911 team will move positively in all the aspects and to build those relationships with the PSAPs. I believe that it will take an effort on both of our parts to be able to work cooperatively. We're willing to take on the challenge and to help be part of the moving to the new next year in reach a 911, the core services. I guarantee you that after this, there'll be something else new and exciting that's going to hit 911. And we better, as I stated earlier, on when we work cooperatively as a region, and we've shown that in the past. And I think that MR 911's task to make sure that there isn't a question of transparency on budgeting or communication, that we are clear on everything and that they feel like PSAPs to get them to where they feel like partners at this point. That's apparent that they do not feel like partners. And we will work to get that repaired and to get them involved in more on budgeting and and financing and the grant and technology. We do have, and I'm going to back up Mr. Benjamin on this, is the one thing that we as MR 911, we do have to protect is the 911 network because we can't ever let something that's a request from PSAP compromise it. So it's not that you can't have it, it's got to make sure that it works well with the 911 network, or can it be deployed without titanium closed network? Because if we deploy something that brings down the system because it created a vulnerability, then we are answer to the public for that. So it's that balance of getting everything that we need along with being able to protect the network.
I'll also add, Mr. Melvin is the Chair of the 911 Oversight Committee, current Chair. Obviously, all of these questions, all of this information is going to be moving to the Study Committee. The issues that are specific to MR 911 and communication, the different issues there, certainly, you know, Ms. Graber and her team will hear and need to address those issues and work through those issues. The items that are really more direction of where the regional 911 system and and operation is going to go needs to go to the Study Committee. Out of that, so I think a lot of this is going to go to the Study Committee, and a lot of this will be answered there. Where do we go as a region as far as MR 911 and managing the 911 system? So a lot of this will be moved to that committee, and I think that is the goal is set our future, how we look in the future.
I'd like to add to the two-way street conversation that we're having here. I think even today, there's a lot of contention. I think there hasn't been open communication on both sides. Speaking to the ticketing system, having gone through Viper 7 as an early adopter on that, it was a tough product. It wasn't ready. But if I were to rely on just one ticketing system through that process, being in Toronto specifically, we were meeting with them weekly, bi-weekly. I would have things on my list. There's a piece of ownership that I think we have in this room to manage even just the ticketing system. So I don't know that a portal is going to be the be-all, end-all, because I know during our upgrade, I had things on my list that in Toronto didn't. So and I also think that the standard that we're expecting here, we're not expecting on other critical systems. For example, the RWC, you know, we're talking about who are the subject matter experts and weighing in on things. You know, the executive board for the RWC is made up of assistant chiefs as well. So I think they're looking at it from a different perspective, which I think adds some balance to the process. And I also think, you know, the RWC tracking for issues, that's on an Excel spreadsheet that's sent to all agencies. So I I think if we're going to be looking at, you know, moving the the region forward, I I think we have to have the same standards across the board. And we're really hitting some of these things hard when, you know, some of our other critical systems are, I mean, there is a standard that we've been, it's been acceptable in other places. So but I do think it's a two-way street. I mean, just even, you know, how we talk in these meetings, I think. I think we can rise above this.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mike Foley, Abendel PD. Just to echo a little bit of that and and give a little bit of my my feelings on it. I think we can all agree the increased communication and transparency needs to happen. I I think that if I saw this kind of passion in the in the subcommittee or working groups that we established, what was that? Which year was that? 2018, maybe?
2020.
So for those that are new to the room, which there's a number of new faces that I certainly haven't in in those, in that year, we broke into sub-working groups in which I was the Chair of the Emerging Technology Group. I think we had a budget group, a governance group, various groups to which was made up of communications managers throughout the Valley. And so it was my understanding or my perception anyway, that that was our way of taking ownership and really asking the questions that need to be asked. And if it was budget related, that we would ask the difficult questions, not only to MR 911, but also to the state in in an effort to increase that transparency. So I think the foundation for giving comfort, as was alluded to over there, I think that's part of it. It's the ownership that we all take, and we all have that responsibility to ask those tough questions. It's disappointing that we're in this venue that it had come to this at this point, but personally, from my perspective, as long as that study group is made up of a variety of people that represent the Valley, I have confidence that the facts will come to to the table, and then we'll be able to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this slide? Ms. Sutherland.
So the only other thing that I want to bring attention to is the way that we've had our meetings recently. And at the at the last, the Oversight Committee meeting that just occurred where the budget was approved, and there were a lot of questions about why the PSAP manager group hadn't approved it. And the Vice Chair and the Chair were both in the room at the time and not able to speak or answer any of those questions. And I think that some of that communication back and forth might have helped during that time. But because we weren't on the agenda, that was not something that was allowed. However, in our PSAP manager meetings, there's been sort of a different rule when it comes to MAG staff that is not on the agenda. But as the administrator, as her time comes up to to give her updates, she would pause and introduce someone else into the meeting. And so if we're if we're going to discuss the the rules of MAG and Robert's Rules for Meetings, et cetera, I think that the rules should be consistent for everyone. And that if we're not going to allow groups to speak up on on an issue that's important to them because it's not on the agenda, then that should not switch for a different group. We we need to be consistent and respectful of everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Yes, we are all expected to follow the the MAG structure and the meeting structure on that. So we'll support that. All right. At sake of time, it is 11:45. We have three more slides. So is it with the group like take a break or would the group like to try to move through the next three slides? Okay, Ms. Graber, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Mapping. I have Dave Eaton. Dave, if you can give us a brief update on the RMAP and the 3D platform. And where he's at, Dave Eaton is our GIS 911. And also the question about is the map I3, Nina I3 complete, data standards for NG 911, as well as the 3D turnaround concerns that Mission Critical Partners brought up. If you can address those quickly.
Sure. Thank you, Liz. Dave Eaton, Maricopa Region 911, GIS Manager. So what would MR 911 do, need to do to upgrade the RMAP to a 3D platform? In 2020, we migrated our map from the Flex API by Esri to the JavaScript API, also hosted by Esri. And the JavaScript API is where the the 3D mapping will be developing. Right now, I have two separate beta projects that were mapping 3D calls. So Rapid SOS does have a Z-axis coordinate for their call information. So the the beta map is plotting in 3D. I'll need some feedback from PSAPs going forward as as how this 3D functionality will work. It'll probably be a pop-up window in in my mind, but certainly something that we need to to work through together. Regarding our map as meeting I3 standards, that that appeared to be something from Mission Critical Partners report that we worked with them on. And as I as I looked through the report, that was actually under computer-aided dispatch, which is obviously not MapDali. The the comments that they had that that said, ultimately, the application is not grown with technology advancements and is now outdated. The the meeting that we had with Mission Critical Partners reviewed our map on a very high-level basis. We did not get into the details of our map in any degree. So their assessment of of our map is without fact. They also mentioned once Ali had retired, the mapping will no longer provide location information. That would be true of any legacy mapping application. Obviously, we're going to have to continue to develop our map as the I3 standards come about as CL DXF comes down the pipeline instead of Ali. So in addition to the 3D turnaround, the Mission Critical Partners also suggested that an additional GIS personnel would be added to MR 911. So these are, these are all considerations from the Mission Critical Partners report. Our map is completely capable of meeting I3 standards. We do the development on it. The API is capable of doing 3D mapping. So we're completely capable of of integrating new data and new functionality as needed.
To you, Ms. Eaton. Any questions on this slide? See none. Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, and the next slide. Technology. Mr. Benjamin will assist in this as well. Why are upgrades to equipments in MR 911 agencies occurring once every six years while upgrades in agencies outside Maricopa County are done approximately 30 days following the release of the equipment or the upgrade? What what and how does MR 911 plan?
What, what and how does MR nine one one plan to support smart transcription system input is hot seating available in the region? Can we? And, and can the service we currently have support this function? Mike, you want to tackle that first one?
Okay, thank you again. Michael Benjamin, nine one one technical manager. The information on, on the, the first bullet item is, is not accurate and it's also ill advised. I would believe this would be the type of information propagated either by sales teams or individuals or groups that have never main maintained technology. Upgrading large market systems within thirty days of a software release is not responsible. Much of the software produced today, nine one one equipment and other is riddled with issues. The only time that this aggressive of a timeline would be sensible would be to apply fixes for critical functionality. I checked with contacts familiar with Vesta installations since they are popular call handling equipment now being bountered about. Checked with Pima County contacts. Pima County in Arizona, of course, is the closest in size to Maricopa Region nine one one PS apps. They're currently on Vesta seven dot seven, not Vesta seven dot nine, which is the current release. Some AT&amp;T Vesta customers in other major markets. These are markets outside of Arizona that are, are as large or larger than MR nine one one. I checked with some of these AT&amp;T customers. They are also not on the latest version, which was just released in, in June of, of this year. So well past the thirty days. PS apps on the latest state promoted call handling as a service. They've not been online long enough to, to need updates. So there, there's no track record of, of how that will be handled. The difference in what is being promoted and what is actually happening in the market is it, it does not line up. Maricopa Region nine one one PS apps are not far behind on techn- technology. Viper five one, Viper seven, Vesta versions in the region all have similar support for next gen core services. There are two exceptions. GMR, Rural Metro and Luke. At GMR's choice, they are waiting for their new building before they upgrade. And Luke is scheduled for an upgraded Vesta scheduled for the first part of two thousand twenty three. Of course, Luke has got special considerations because of their Department of Defense intricacies. So just a further note on this, we are in the process of upgrading our Vesta sites. We have some seven dot seven and seven dot eight to version seven dot nine with some gate, some dates provided to us by Motorola Vesta support. We were just told last Thursday that the promised full support for NG nine one one invested seven dot nine is not actually there. So Vesta seven dot nine we are aiming for, but it's been released now into the public domain that Vesta seven dot nine does not actually have full NG nine one one support. Prior to the Tempe Vesta go live, we went through a Vesta upgrade process, upgrading them to pre-production, upgrading them from what was delivered as seven dot eight to seven dot nine. This process took about four hours on a system that was not in service and a system configured only for one PS app. Again, system was, was not in service. Upgrading their system so close to that the release date of June was acceptable because the system was available for significant pre-production testing and validation. We've been told by the Vesta support that upgrades for production sites will take longer than the four hour window that it took to update a system that was not actually servicing any calls. Another quick note, PS apps, another part of the state are behind in technology right, right now due to delays into AT&amp;T projects. These are not these delays are, are not associated with supply chain issues. These are execution issues on the part of, of AT&amp;T. And the last note on this. NGCS for our region again is now multiple months behind and this is not due to delays on Maricopa Region's part. We are not behind on our responsibilities. Even so, as recently as this week, the primary contractor reported to the state that project vendors are leveraging MR nine one one's advanced skill set to accomplish tasks that would not normally be given over to an entity like MR nine one one. We continue to have our resources fulfill responsibilities and additionally assist in this project to make sure that we do the right thing for our community to get this project done.
Mr. Stillwell.
Jim Stillwell, I'm CS. Mike. I, I, I hear a lot of you saying how the second part of that question is wrong, but I don't hear anything in you answering the first part of that question. So I went through my upgrade a little over a year and a half ago now. And I went from, if memory serves me correct, Viper four point three to Viper seven point four, which means I missed several major, major updates. And so I would like to hear you answer the first part of that question. What's MR nine one one doing to improve the six year cycle? Because if, if we have to wait six years before I get Viper seven point nine, there's a problem with that. And, and, and I will say I, I, I had the same conversations with AT&amp;T that this question asker had. And I believe that it's, it's, it's incorrectly interpreted on the screen there in, in writing. The, the conversations I had with AT&amp;T, they said that once Motorola has made the release of an update, it then goes into an AT&amp;T test facility. And, and they have an internal test facility and once they have determined that it's safe, from that point, they have thirty days to where they will update or implement it. And, and again, because, because they are cloud based, it's, it's pushing it from a, from a, from a single point data center in updating multiple agency this, at the same time. They don't have to ascend a tech out to, to seven sites. So while thirty days may not be accurate or may not be accurately written in that question, I, I, I think you should be focusing more on the first part of that question. How are we going to cut down that six years?
So you were upgraded from Viper four dot one to Viper seven. There was no Viper five. They in Toronto wanted to line up the versions of Viper to the versions of Power nine one one. So they skipped version five completely. The last available version in the four train was four dot one. So you were on the, the most available train in, in four dot one. And you are
In twenty thirteen.
And, and you are on the most available version that, that you are up to the latest patch version available in Viper seven.
As of today, what about tomorrow?
Well, in the, in Viper world, they do release patches very frequently. You, you've not been behind in, in patches by probably not more than thirty days actually, but your, your patch level is, is up to the level that they've released.
Okay, so, so thank you for that. But can you, again, can you answer the first part of that question? What is the region doing to shorten that six year window before?
Ms. Graber.
Let me answer that. Chief Walker, Jim Stillwell. So we can look at making the projects, you know, in a timely manner. It's when it gets involved, when we have to replace equipment and whether your call handling is a service or you're on prem, the equipment under each of your desk has to be changed out. And so the real, the so when you say thirty days, yeah, software releases, you can get them. That makes sense. But when you're looking at changing out equipment and doing a forklift of a project, those get a little more tricky. So we can see with the funding and resources, if we can make it less than six, that was a number that we put out on the strategic plan. Industry standards show that PCs replaced every five to seven years. Just because PCs aren't replaced doesn't mean technology can't be added. So those are the things that we type to look at, but we just want to make sure everybody's clear that that six years is for equipment change out and software. If, if the software upgrade and doesn't a ma- match the PC hardware capability, then they have to be changed out. So let's make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you, ma'am. That's, that's actually the answer I was looking for.
I just wanted to make a note that, you know, we were the third agency in the nation that went to Viper seven. And so on, and I think you were a few months after us, right? So I feel like that's number one, pretty progressive, but also we found issues with the product within Toronto and it was, it was a hurdle to get through those. We're stable now. But I think it also goes to the point that Mike Benjamin is talking about is how cutting edge, bleeding edge do we want to be on things like this? So I like all the toys, you know, I like going into the shiny world, but when we're talking about nine one one, when we're talking about our radio systems, things like these critical infrastructure, I don't know that we always want to be that bleeding edge. I know we talked with Viper seven. There were several reasons why we decided to go to Viper seven and specifically the number one reason is we didn't, you know, want to go to a BlackBerry upgrade when iPhone fourteen is available. So I think we were pretty progressive on that, but it also has its inherent risks. And I think the point that Mike Benjamin is trying to make is that there's a balance in that decision making, especially when we're trying to work as a region.
Thank you, Ms. Potts. Ms. Weber.
First comment regarding that, I totally understand. I am not as taky as you are. I don't like to be on the bleeding edge. But my example for the issues when it comes with, even if we're not saying hardware upgrade, we're talking about software upgrades. When Gilbert cut to our Viper system that we're still on right now in March of two thousand eighteen, we experienced a park issue. I'm sure all of MR nine one one staff is very familiar with that because it kept coming up and it would only affect our agency. No, their PS app experienced that. MR nine one did try to, they replace the whole console. They did a hard, you know, reinstallation of everything and still did not fix it. By the time I came into the position and even a year afterwards, we're still experiencing the issue. The in Toronto rep told the nine one one tech who is no longer with MR nine one one that Gilbert specifically had to upgrade to the latest version in order for them to accurately pinpoint what is going on and what is causing this park issue. That text said Gilbert's not up for their upgrade yet. So that's not possible. So that is why that question is on there. Why are we not getting the, where can we not get these version updates? And I know we are way behind as far as for, maybe, well, we were ahead of you. Now we're behind you. So that's to clarify that part of it. As far as the other sites having AT&amp;T execution issues, I just want to clarify that Mojave County went live already. So did La Paz, so did Hila. And then this week is Payson, Yuma County and Somerton. I personally talked to the Mojave County PSET manager and they admitted that they were the very first county to go live on the NGCS system. There were some hiccups. However, that's to be expected with the first agency, just like you stated, Michelle, being one of the very first ones to go on something, but the AT&amp;T texts and the state stepped in and helped and resolved the issues and their functioning as to be expected and they're happy with their software and their phone solution. The, when you talked like Michael about the updating systems that are in production that will take longer, that speaks to one of the issues that I have, concerns that I have regarding how will you keep our systems updated? When you have to come in and take down a whole center or have to take a lengthier time to replace hardware, is this because we're still utilizing an on prem solution versus using call handling as solution? And I'm not saying that we have to go with AT&amp;T or whatever. I'm saying MR nine one one, do we need a pivot? And move away from this on prem solution that keeps us pigeonholed in a box and not allow us to pivot and be able to push those updates sooner. And when we talk about vests or AT&amp;T and Motorola Vesta being able to push updates out in thirty days, that's because they're on a private public safety hosted solution. They can push that update out to the agency versus having techs come onsite and touch the hardware. And I can attest to that because we went to a cloud CAD back in March, where one of the first agencies to directly deploy our CAD system to the cloud. Was it scary? Yes. But I can tell you, I love it right now because I can get my updates as soon as they're ready. I don't have to wait for a lengthy maintenance window that takes down half my center.
Thank you. We certainly acknowledge your comments, Ms. Weber. Any comment?
I'm sorry. Yep. And then those are the, I think Cam expressed perfectly on the things that the nine one one study committee needs to know about. Do we do nine one one call handling as a service and also on the hot seating? What does that look like for the region? What are our options on having agencies work at different locations, whether it's on a laptop or whether it's in in another piece up that you, that's hosting. So I think those are the kind of things that we need to tell the nine one one study committee to, these are future thinking are not future thing, but things that we need to move towards and how that looks and what governance is behind it. So on, on both of those, I agree that we should be able to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this slide? I see none. Ms. Graber.
I'm sorry. And then the last slide, I believe, is why doesn't MR nine one one operate under a regulatory authority such as an entity as AT&amp;T? So
This is your microphone on.
Yep. So do we, we are not a regular, we don't go and fall under regulatory, whether it's through the Arizona Corporation Commission or the FCC because we don't own, we're not a facilities owner. The FCC and Arizona Corporation Commission oversee utility companies to utility companies that provide telecommunications. So in the FCC guidelines, they recognize that and they specifically, when they went with nine one one outages, they noted that PS apps, nine one one authorities and government entities were not part of the FCC regulatory for nine one one outages because they don't have fiber. So when our, in our networking, when we have all stream or Cox or Lumen have an outage, those are reported to the FCC that they're a part of our system and they recognize that that fiber is regulated that's going through the nine one one network. But is MR nine one one's office regulated by the FCC? Now the FCC doesn't do any government nine one one. Your PS apps aren't regulated. The state nine one one office isn't regulated. How many changes in leadership have occurred at the ADOA office in the last six years? So we have had four different nine one one administrators in the last actually five years. So there's been quite a change with each new administrator comes different points of view or visions, as it were. So we try to meet those, but that's, we've had four of them. What actions has the state of nine one one, I'm sorry, the state of Arizona ADOA done to give us confidence that they would run a better nine one one program than the one controlled by the mag region? I think the concern would be, and this is my opinion, is that there's the lack governance with the state on what they have. We, they do have an ARS code that shows that the, the director is to disseminate the money within to the, what they've called the political subdivisions or nine one one authorities, and that would be the member agencies. So with the mag, the Maricopa Association of Governments with that governance that we have with having them eyes on our, on our decisions by mayors, city managers, chiefs and PS app managers. That governance is a lot deeper and is well monitored than what is set up with the state at this point, in my opinion.
Yes.
Lynda Gago, Yamesa PD, I just want to comment on the last question and it's just a comment. I don't feel it's very professional for us to be talking about what the state would, has given us confidence that they would run a better program without a representative of the state here to give us feedback as to what our questions are. So I would kind of prefer if we didn't take that road, it's inflammatory and it's just unprofessional of us to talk about as a group.
And so I'm just to reemphasize that all the questions were submitted by PS apps.
I understand that. I just don't feel this should have been one that was picked as it is based solely on opinion of whoever's answering it.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Lynda, for bringing that up. I agree with that. And then as far as changes in leadership, my comment with that is regardless of change in leadership in ADOA, there's still the state contract that exists that doesn't change. And for me, the concern for me as far as MR nine one one, which is what the study committee is supposed to be evaluating, is that we have no service level agreement with MR nine one one. I have no idea what I am able to expect from them and what they can expect from me as our relationship goes. So that was one of my requests moving forward is that there is documentation that spells out the relationship. And then as far as for the state, the contract, what I want to mention
as far as for the state, the contract, what I want to mention about that is the reason why I even asked about service level agreement is if you remember me having conversation with you over email and phone inquiring about that is that I found out that the A T and T contract and I read through it, it's four hundred plus pages that spells out the relationship between A T and T and the P S app. I want the same. I want that level of detail in our relationship.
So that's the state contract that for the R F P that the state put out. We we are not vendors, and so we didn't answer the state R F P. If um and the only state contract that I have is with the grant process is that one. And for changes that you want with S L A's or anything, this is something that we can bring to the nine one one committee that could be added through the mag max contract with the City of Phoenix. If you wanted to add S L A's out, I think that's something that they consider that would be the pathway I would believe that we follow.
And that's my suggestion and ask is that this be taken up and established because that would mitigate some of the concerns and issues that we're addressing now after so many years of this going on is that we set forth these expectations. There wouldn't be this miscommunication.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. As I said, I think that would be a perfect item to go to study committee to as a group. If that's the direction we want to go, that there's an S L A formed. That's a perfect one for them to consider. Any other questions on this slide? Seeing none. Ms. Graber, anything else on your?
I think that's the last slide.
Oh, we, okay. Yeah, I, okay, you're good. Uh, Ms. Weber.
Was there anything else regarding the hot seating topic? Is that that seemed to have been skipped or was your comment regarding hot seating it? So prior sl- slide.
Yep. So that, uh, the nine one one study committee that uh would we were going to do that one along with the upgrades or anything that goes for to what we want is our vision is hot scene. What does that look like? How, what is it? Can we do laptops at designated locations? Can you easily go to another P S app and on a laptop? And so that was something we were going to express the study committee that the P S app managers wanted to be able to do that.
I just want a point of clarification because it was misrepresented at the last oversight committee regarding what hot seating truly is. Hot seating is not call sharing. It's not me going to another P S app and using their equipment and their login and not having my own resources or my own calls. Hot seating that we desire and need in this area is the ability to go to another agency that uses the same phone platform and sign in with our agency's credentials and receive our calls. That's what we're asking for the study committee to investigate and implement in the region.
So noted.
Graber.
I said so noted.
Yes, Ms. Potts.
So I want to add to, you know, we're looking at hot seating, citizen input, uh, smart transcription. And, you know, historically, I think to Avondale's point about, you know, our working groups and again, working as a region, I think one of the things we haven't done, because I don't think we're working together very well, is think about through, think through some of the consequences with some of these decisions. So I know when we had to evacuate, we went to Tempe and we were able to route calls like a piece up within a piece up. But now that we're going to in Toronto and um and Vesta Systems, you know, that has that makes a huge change in our continuity plans and we haven't had that discussion. So now that you're on Vesta, we're going to have to figure something else out because, you know, our users not easily will be able to do that, I think. So we're not really, I I think having some of these, you know, second and third order discussions or discussions on second and third order consequences. You know, citizen input, smart transcription, there's other vendors out there. I know when we had the conversation of managed services before, we had procurement discussions too. And so I guess the question is with smart transcription and citizen input, yes, it's available in Vesta. But have we considered stepping back and saying this is functionality we want? And what's the best way to get this? So those of us on Viper could also have it and maybe deploy it. And if the state's willing to pay it uh under the the system of Vesta, would they be willing to pay it under, say, a convey nine one one, which is an integration into rapid S O S, which provides this as well? So I don't know that we've stepped back to look at the holistic picture on continuity planning and getting these additional functionalities into us as an entire region. So I I guess that would be my encouragement is that maybe we step back a little bit and just because it's here right in front of us, maybe that's not the best way to go, but maybe look a little bit holistically and still work as a region.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Well, we've had certainly had certainly many questions. The next item is, are there any other questions on this item from the membership? All right, seeing none. This item is on the agenda for information discussion only. We'll now move on to request for future agenda items. Are there any requests from members from either the nine one one oversight team or P set managers group for an item on a future agenda? All right, seeing none. Wanted to comment from the committee. Are there any comments or announcements from the membership? Seeing none. I'll just have one final comment. So I wanted to thank everybody for your input. Certainly been much robust conversation leading up to this and in today. I mean, it's important that we challenge ourselves. I have no doubt that everyone in this room is committed to our community and providing the best service we can to our community. I have no doubt that's not everyone's motive. While there's certainly many ideas being discussed, I strongly believe we need to ensure that how we move forward does not create risk to nine one one system. Working as a group has served our region well for more than two decades. I believe there is still value in working together and deciding as a region where we will go. The nine one one study committee, as mentioned, is the proper place for many of these new ideas or potential changes in direction to be discussed and vetted. Where we want to go as a region, we should decide collaboratively and together where we want to go. Good conversations, move these things forward as opposed to questions, but where we want to go is my recommendation or suggestion. Ultimately, where we go as a region will be determined by the work of the study committee, the managed group and the executives. So I want to thank everybody again. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.